Good evening and welcome to the June Select Board meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I wasn't having a seizure, but it says June 10th.
I don't know why, mine says the 24th on it.
It was revised to cover sheets.
Maybe that's why.
Oh, that's right, yeah, because you took them last meeting.
Oh, okay, because I'm looking at them, I'm like...
Because I'm like, no, I remember that.
So it wasn't really a seizure there, it was just me. Okay, a motion would be in order to review and approve the agenda, and I'd just like to add executive session for personnel.
And can I ask one question before we get to the motion?
Sure, yeah.
Item five, line E, Transportation Advisory Committee.
Yeah.
Is that the same thing as Marble Valley Regional Transit District Board of Commissioners?
It was the same one that through Rutland Regional Planning Commission, that they needed those two positions filled, and you said you would be the alternate for it?
Well, no, the regional one I thought was Bruce.
He's through the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Oh, okay.
The transportation.
The transportation one.
Okay, but this...
That would be you.
It's not the bus, this is the buses Board of Commissioners, right?
It's through the Rutland Regional Planning, transportation. It's just transportation, it's not part of the planning, the strategic planning.
Yeah, that's the one that hired.
But he said that he sent it to me, and I thought that was the one you were referring to, because you've spoken with Devin.
Well, at the, because he's the chairman of the Board of Commissioners for the bus.
Okay, so I don't know if he labels, if they do it differently under the bus, or just put it under transportation, because I don't know any other transportation they have under there.
Yeah, okay, but, yeah. It's for the bus, it's the position for the bus.
I'll make sure it is, if not, I'll take your name off of there, but we need somebody anyway to serve around the transportation.
Well, that's, well...
Well, it's an alternate position.
It's an alternate, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
But the one they're looking for, Devin was looking for, he was speaking as Commissioner of the Bus Board of Commissioners.
And I guess I got confused, because he sent those two applications to me, and I didn't even talk to him, and he said I need these, you know, filled out, so...
Okay. We'll get you on all the committees here pretty soon.
Trying to sneak it in on you.
All right, a motion would be in order to approve with the addition.
Motion to approve with the addition.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. A motion would be in order to approve the June 10th meetings.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. We'll wait and see, someone's coming up the stairs if they're interested in open public comment. Oh, Jim Moore. Jim Moore, are you interested in open public comment?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, I was just... Sorry, you came to mind right off, because I thought, oh, Jim, Jim has no fear of turtles. What, are you talking about the Beaver Pond?
Yeah.
That's later on the agenda.
Oh, the ordinance?
It's actually on the, no, the dock. Okay, yeah, public comment, I was not able to catch on fire, there was an accident.
We don't know it was an accident.
Yeah.
No, we don't know it. I know, Jim, that's your investigation, we had a fire investigator up there.
All right, well, did he find the bag?
And the police.
He didn't pull it out.
He found the backpack in the water.
No, no, the bag that started the fire.
Oh, I don't know if he pulled it out.
He didn't.
He had a fire investigator and a state police, so...
So they hung a bag out of their tent, and it must have caught on fire overnight, and it dripped on the deck. It was shoddy, so actually the fire was something marginal, maybe. So, yeah, it was...
Well, they said suspicious, so we go with that.
Of course, very suspicious, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't great, I'm not saying they were really good, they did it, but no one intended, it wasn't like the week before when they threw the parts, it was someone else that did that on purpose, throwing them.
Negative, maybe.
Yeah, this was, you know, the fact they took their tent stuff and just ran and left after their tent.
Right.
It was like, oh, no.
Well, that is, that is another...
It's not the actions of someone that says, hey, let's set the dart on fire, and then like run away and leave half their tent there, so...
Well, I just, we, we have the report from them that they're compiling, so I kind of, you know, I mean, we have no proof it was accidental, we have no proof that it was set on fire on purpose.
Right, and that's probably beside the point. Can we, I gotta go back to the turtle, because it was suffering. Is there a, can we clean it up now?
Yeah, I said, I told Dale we could.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Help it come on, it's eating now. Yeah, I'll do it.
Oh my god.
Some members of the committee are willing to put some money up front, so we can get the dock repaired, and then we'll, you know, go through insurance, wait...
We're not, insurance isn't going to cover it.
Okay.
It was never added to the property schedule. So when it was purchased and put up, it was never added to our insurance.
Okay, so the tables, nothing there is covered?
I do not know if the ta, I'm guessing the tables probably weren't either.
Okay.
So I thought, once it's repaired, it'll be added to the property schedule. So they said there won't be any coverage on it. Like Dale and I said, the deductible is probably going to be as much as, you know, what it would cost to fix it anyway, and there is money in the Beaver Pond Committee Fund.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, we're all good there, yeah.
And so we can get it repaired?
Well, I was going to have everybody decide tonight, kind of how we want to do this. I just wanted to make sure the investigation was over, and if the structure was good, which everyone seems to think it is, then just putting the planks that are missing onto it. So I think that's...
We checked, it seems to be, the cleanup will be the worst part.
Yeah, yeah, and I asked if you guys needed help with public works, and you guys said you do so.
We'll try it.
Okay, but if you want, even if you drag it all out and put it in a pile, they can go down and grab it all, you know, so, so you guys don't have to holler. So just let me know, and I can give them a heads up. Okay, but yeah, I would, I'd say you can go ahead.
And repair it with what, wood or composite material?
Well, we still have two good sections there, so we were going to replace it with, what?
The composite, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see that, so, rather than it's...
We haven't had any trouble with it, other than this.
Yeah, and that, it's exactly the same we have up at the pool, so it's, it's good.
Burns very quickly, though.
Good and hardy, well, it burns the same as wood, that, they say that there's really no difference between that and wood, when it, if you want to burn it, it's going to burn pretty much the same, so...
Okay, then we'll get the stuff ordered.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You could have chatted if you wanted. It's still not really an investigation, so... All right. We have any comments that we may...
Yes. And they're going to order through the town, they're not going to order, so we get the, I mean, I'm a little confused, like, they're going to go and order it, or we're going to order it, and they're going to put it on?
They were going to go get it, pick it up, and put it on, and bill us.
Okay, I think it's better that we order it and they pick it up. I think that, rather than they order, they pay for it, I mean...
Well, I don't think they're ordering it, I think they just, they're going to wherever they get it from and pick it up.
Well, I, I think they should figure out how much that is, and have Celia give them a check, because, otherwise, how are you going to get the tax exempted and all that? Because if they're going as individuals, that's...
Right, well, I think that's where they got it from before, so I would think it's the same process that they went through before.
We paid for it before, before it got delivered here, because we ordered it through the town that ordered it, so... I, I just think that's bad practice, in my opinion, when people start getting reimbursed that way. It makes, and it also makes more work downstairs, too, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought they said they were going to order it?
Well, that's, I'm...
I mean, so...
Yeah, it's a little confusing.
Yeah, but they're not...
I'm not sure what they're talking about.
If they go and order it, we've got time to tell them, don't buy it.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think you can call doctor, doctors, order it, tell them what you need, Celia can pay for it, give them a check, and they can pick it up, but...
Or they can bill us if they can.
Yeah, or bill us, right, I'm sure that's probably what happened before. So, I think that's a better process. And then it'll be important to inventory and put everything on the schedule. That's unfortunate that the prior person didn't do that.
Right, it happens a lot, I mean, I know in the city it does, too, things are, they don't think about.
Yeah, well, so, okay.
She's aware of it now, so...
All right, okay, moving on. Oh, I just had one thing I wanted to add, under public comment. At the last meeting, a member of the public was talking about mowing, and was speaking about that we mow property that's not ours, and so I just want to clarify that. The property, and there was a comment made about electrical poles are set on town or municipal lines, and that property that we mow, as you come into town there, that little V, like if you're going up to Paul Corliss's or something, that belongs to the town. Years ago, long before I was here, Wright Stevens, who lived in Dick Horner's house, bought that property and was going to build a house there. It's very rocky, you can still see the cellar hole there. Because he couldn't, that property was transferred to the town for, I think, the tune of a dollar, as things were back there, so, just, I think it's unfortunate when people say things, and it puts the mis...
Yeah.
Perception out there that we're doing things, or town employees are doing things that we shouldn't be doing, or, you know, maintaining property that's not ours. That property belongs to the town, it's belonged to the town for a very long time, so I just wanted to clear that up.
It's been mowed for as long as I can reach.
Uh, yeah, and there's obviously a reason, because it was conveyed to the town, so...
Wright Stevens went to Hospital Hill.
Wright Stevens?
No.
No, Dick Horner.
Yeah, I knew that.
Yeah, yeah. And, and we get a bit history lessons.
Thank you. I learned something today.
Okay, all right, everybody had a chance to look at the bills?
Yes.
And we're going to move right into the Fire Department and the floor. Everybody has the two-page handout from DeBois and King, and it kind of highlights, it was, anything you want to address about it? You've seen this?
I've seen it, yeah.
You're good with this?
Yeah.
Okay. And it tells you on the second or third, third page, the estimate is roughly $15,000. Questions? Questions for Josh? Judy, concerns? Motion to approve?
Second. They're going to do all the bays, or just the, yeah, good.
Good.
One of my biggest concerns is the ladder sits right on the joint between the two pores. It's hollow on one side, it's got to be hollowed away in the other. How fire goes in is, is got to be the question that's happening.
And does it say how soon they're coming down?
I think once this is approved, I can just reach out to them, say, we, you know, approve this, and then they can...
Schedule.
Yeah.
Okay.
They need a minute, 72 hours for dig save and stuff like that, but...
Yeah, because the sooner the better, the sooner we have some...
I'll reach out to them tomorrow, so hopefully...
And know what direction we're going, yeah.
How happy you want to email to Josh, that way you have a, you know, record, so...
All right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract and authorize the town manager to sign. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
All right, the Sheriff's Department contract that we signed and approved last meeting has been received, signed?
Yes.
Okay.
I just put that on there, so everybody knew that, when I sent it out, they just turned around and sent it right back to us, so...
Okay. All right, a motion would be in order to appoint Dick Horner as a regular commissioner, and Judy Frazier as the alternate for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. A motion would be in order to appoint Albert Winta as the alternate to TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
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 Albert looks nervous.
No, I'm not nervous.
Uh, any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we'll find out if we have to do something different for the bus, and if we do, we'll do that next meeting.
Because that's the one that needed, had the urgency.
Okay.
Yeah.
This one does, too, so...
Oh, it does.
Transportation urgency all around.
I know, it'd be nice if everything fell under one umbrella and just had, you know...
Yeah. Beaver Pond, so you received, in your pocket, comments from Dale, and also in your pocket was the adjustments that we had made prior.
And there was one from, Jim Moore actually emailed me first.
Oh, yeah.
He just had the one area he, that he questioned, that's it. And then the other one came from Dale, I was like...
Yeah, that, Jim thought we just assign, or better signage about the swimming area, to like designate, like, you know, swimming area between like these two signs, or something like that, so... All of a sudden, you're not fishing, and somebody goes, hey, I'm swimming here.
Well, I was just going to say, with those signs, it's actually needed, like you said, for the enforcement of the street-side parking. We needed the signs, no parking between signs, that way they can enforce it.
Yeah.
The swimming area has a condition that may require enforcement of no fishing in a swimming area.
Yeah.
And the, whoever's doing the investigation would have to look and say, well, where's the swimming area?
Yeah.
There's the two signs, it's right between, so it's clear, black and white, you know...
What does the sign up there now say?
There is a sign at the swimming area.
It's defined as a swimming area, but you may need to define, you know,
I think it says no fishing.
Swimming area between signs.
Yeah.
I don't think, I don't think we need to get that deep into the weeds with these things. I, I mean, everyone I've talked to, the police, everybody even, like says, we've got to stop making that place, we've got to stop doing so much to it, for one thing. And that might deter a lot of these people that are hanging out there and doing things. And I just feel like we went crazy with signs everywhere. I mean, the Beaver Pond picnic area looked like a, you know, I mean, there's signs out of every tree we have down there. And it, it just withdraws from the beauty, I think, of the pond, when it was just naturally a nice little area to fish and sit, have a picnic, maybe.
Yeah.
And there's a sign at the swimming spot that says, swimming area, and I think it also says on there, no fishing.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Yeah, no fishing, no glass bottles, and something else, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if people want to swim the length of the pond, then I think they're going to have to deal with whatever is transpiring, you know, like on the pond, right?
Yes, definitely.
So, I mean, if someone's out on a paddleboard, then they should not swim into the paddleboard. So, okay, um... So, I mean, we can kind of go through, I mean, we can go through these, or I can take this, and I can make changes on ours, we can... One of the things that they talked about, they wanted to know, if the par, if it's not the park, should facilities be in the definition? Because it says, access hours to Beaver Pond facilities. I mean, when I think about facilities, I think about, like, there's the swimming area and the park area, those are facilities.
And, and that's where I think we should do the clarification, in that...
In the definitions?
In the definitions, you know, it's nice, Beaver Pond is approximate 11.1 surface water body located in the sound of proactive, the park is, you know, it's this. And then it should say that maybe Beaver Pond Park Swimming Area is a designated swimming area. Beaver Pond Park Picnic Area is the designated area for picnicking. And then Beaver Pond Park Trails Area is a designated area for hiking, which it's already designated as hiking, there are trail markers, and everything you need to know is right there, so...
Well, I just put, I put Beaver Pond Park picnic areas located on the north end with picnic tables and grills.
Oh, okay, we're not looking at the same thing you are, then?
Well, you're, no, I wrote that under definitions. That, that's the way I'm saying I would define it. Because I think, like, that tells you the location, and it
Yep.
Kind of gives you the expectation of what's happening up there.
Yeah, it captures.
I mean, I guess you could say the Beaver Pond Swimming Area is located at the south, at the beach area on the south end.
Or east side of the pond.
And there's only one swimming area, right? When we were used, there was two swimming areas, but right now there's only one, correct?
Well, you could swim on the...
Well, you could swim from the dock if you wanted to.
Well, no, but designated swimming area. It used to be in the picnic area and on the south end was swimming area.
No, it's just down on the south end.
No, it's just, okay, yeah.
So Beaver Pond Swim Area is located on the southwest...
East.
Oh, s, no.
Yeah, no, it's west.
Southwest.
West.
West.
West Proctor Road, East Proctor Road.
I know, but I'm talking about the swimming area is on the east side.
The what, the swim?
Swimming area.
On the west side, Jim.
If you look to West Rutland that way, it's like...
That's west.
That's the west shoreline.
Right, but it's on this side, it's on this end.
Well, if you're on the other side of the pond, you're looking west at the south, at the swimming...
Which shoreline is it on? Is it on the east shoreline or the west shoreline?
West shoreline.
You're, you're right, you're standing at the shore looking east, and there's the swimming area.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But it's on the west shore.
You come down the hill, it's right there, and that's east. West Rutland's the opposite direction. You're going this way.
That's, you're right, the compass over there.
Right.
Take the compass.
How about the, how about the swimming area is located?
On the east, on the west shore.
Yes.
The swim area is located at the...
South end of the west shore.
Take the compass over there, true, stand at the dam.
Where's the beach?
I guess it's the way I picture it, I just picture it this way, and I picture that's east.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
It's west.
So if we have...
The cliff is on the east side.
So do we need to define what the hiking trails are?
No, but we define, there's a picnic area, there's a swimming area, and we do have a trails area in the park.
Well...
You know, do we want to leave that, or we just want to acknowledge that, yes, there's a trails area? We don't have to define anything, it's already laid out, marked.
The Beaver Pond Park consists of 11.8 acre pond, hiking trails, fishing spots, and a designated swimming area.
Well, it's got a designated picnic area, too. That's the thing we want to flag, is the three areas of concern.
Well, I think the picnic area, we decided to delineate, because we talked about that in opening and closing, because there was conversation about... So this was one of the things, like, the trails never really close, right? But we talked about the ordinary hours of Beaver Pond, I mean, and we don't talk about it. I, if they were here, I would remind them, they wrote this ordinance. The ordinary hours of access to the Beaver Pond and facilities is from dawn to dusk during the months, when the Beaver Pond picnic area is open to the public from April 1st to November 1st each year. So... To, their question was, do we want to take ordinary out? Are there non-ordinary hours?
So can I jump in on that?
Sure, go ahead, jump.
On that note?
Please do.
So we don't get off into...
I, I, listen, I...
No, I get it, it's, so, I had a question here, of course, reading it makes sense. So if it was to come up, say, after dusk, does that mean the surround, the pond, the surrounding pond is prohibited from parking, swimming, fishing, anything of that nature, because the sign says?
Right, it's...
After dusk.
It is a little...
And is that enforced, are we policing that?
No.
No. So I'm, so my, the example, you know, if kids go up and they park after, you know, eight, nine o'clock at night, and they want to chit chat, right? Who's, is that, are they, are they...
Being run off?
Are they, yeah, are they, you know, going against the ordinance, or they...
I think that, I, I think it was more geared towards, like, the picnic area, that, just like, I, I think a lot of parks in the city, or a lot of places you'll say are open or closed at dusk, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, I, listen, I, I don't have to get too far in the weeds from this, I just think there were things in here that were a little funky and didn't make sense, and...
Oh, that's okay, it's just, it's explaining it, so...
Yeah.
You know, we don't hit somebody, you know, with a, with a fine, we send the sheriff up there, and it says, you know, you can't park.
Yeah.
I don't see any reason why somebody couldn't sit there, if they wanted to go up, take a walk, and they want to sit down, they want to fish, they want to, you know, do whatever...
I mean, honestly, we talked about April 1st and November 1st.
Yeah, that was for the picnic area.
Yeah, also, um...
And that could remain with the, with the picnic area, because it's not, it's just a different access to that, you have to go through that gate to get down in there.
If you want to drive.
If you want to drive down in there, you know.
Yeah.
The rest of it's just parking, you're pulling alongside the pond, um...
The thing is, none of it's enforceable, unless the sheriff's in town.
Right, so why, so why the sign, why, you know, or even mention it?
Well, you have an ordinance, so it is enforceable, because it's in an ordinance.
Right, so that's saying it's not...
So if, if people were there at 3:00 in the morning, you'd have to use the ordinance to make it enforceable, so, but, other than that, do I think that anyone's driving around the pond at, you know, a minute past dusk and pushing people away? No. So, I, I don't know, I mean...
Well, some of the best fishing, you fish at night when it's dark, you know?
Well, some people may go down and swim.
Yeah.
I think there's a street lamp right there that, if they wanted to swim, you could.
Well, what if you just said the hours of the Beaver Pond picnic area?
Well, that's what Article 3 should be, access hours to the Beaver Pond Park picnic area, period.
Article 3, I don't even have...
Yeah, that's the one we're talking about, those hours of, you know, it being open. That should just be...
And then, and then get rid of, and the facilities?
Yes.
So the hours of access to the Beaver Pond picnic area...
Beaver Pond Park, well, let's be consistent, you know, we call it Beaver Pond Park, so let's call it Beaver Pond Park.
Picnic.
Picnic area.
Beaver Pond picnic area, he said.
Well, Beaver Pond Park...
Picnic area.
Dash picnic area, I have it down below.
Right, just the picnic area.
It's like, how many shells can...
Down to dusk.
Yeah.
Right.
All right?
Then the pond is open.
Okay, so does that, does that clean that up, then? Okay. And then we talked about the, the gate, and like that would be more at the discretion of the town manager and the Department of Public Works.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I think that leaves it open for whatever...
Yeah, I do think that, and Judy's going to talk about this later in her report, that if, maybe where we want to put a gate is to go down to the dam in weather like this, and I know that's part of a snowmobile trail, but it doesn't have to be closed during the winter months, so snowmobiles, and there used to be a huge rock there, so the snowmobiles used to, must have gone around it, but I think we've had some...
Yeah, people started to drive down that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not surprising.
Yeah, but there used to be a huge piece of marble or something there, so you couldn't drive down there, I don't know. But maybe that's the place we need to think about putting a gate or something.
A barrier of something.
Yeah.
Put a concrete median right there in this, you know...
Yeah.
Now, you guys could just move it, slide it to the side if you needed to, and then just slide it back.
Yeah, maybe something like that.
Yeah, I mean, something even big enough for a snowmobile to get by, but a car can't.
Yeah. So are we good with just letting the public works guys figure that out, and put something down there that would impede vehicular traffic?
Yeah.
Kind of the same they have up on the trail up in Florence with the snowmobile trail?
Yeah.
Snowmobiles can get through there, but I think that's it, yeah.
Okay, all right, yeah, so if the guys could just look into that, I think that would, that would probably eliminate some phone calls, maybe. All right, and then if we go on to four, let me see what they have. So they want to talk about electrical, battery, electrical...
Maybe just put no motors.
Yeah.
About the, the use of internal combustion and/or electric motors? Because motors now are used simultaneously to internal combustion and electrical. Really, internal combustion is an engine.
Yeah.
Electrical are motors, but, but they're used interchangeably, so...
Okay, so...
How about just...
Add electric.
And/or electric motors. The use of internal combustion and/or electric motors.
To power, okay.
To power, you know, then it covers both.
Yeah.
If that was their intent, to eliminate any
Yep.
Motor-driven
Sure.
Transportation or movement, mode of movement, that would cover them all.
Um, there, Section 3 is, I mean, I think it seems clear, glass containers are prohibited. I mean, I guess...
Yeah.
I worry that things have to be too spelled out for people.
Well, I have that highlighted here, so it's, when it says, I can understand the glass containers, but when you say glass containers, obvious, it's obvious that in the picnic area, you know, you don't... But again, you're talking about the whole park.
I think the whole park.
Yeah.
So if you're sitting... So if you're sitting, swimming, if you're parked and you're talking, if you're up on a trail.
No glass.
Do we, we say no glass when you're parked?
Yeah, we have no glass, glass prohibited, so it's everywhere.
Yeah. I mean, I think if you're sitting over on the west side in your vehicle drinking out of a glass container, that's different. I mean, but I think that, I mean, and we see it like during green update and like that. People just throw them in the, in the pond. So, to me, I think if you just say none, then maybe that eliminates that. Because you don't want them down in the beach area. You don't want it on the trail. So.
And that's what I was going to say, you know, this is.
No glass.
Article four is water rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Article five is rules and regulations.
Well, maybe we just make it.
And I just wonder if we add it to that also. No glass containers allowed. So then it doesn't matter if it's. You know, the water rules and/or the land rules, just no glass containers.
Oh, just add it under, sure. We can make it section six here. No glass containers, sure. It's kind of a rule when you go to places like that.
Yes. But the only thing is you're talking about making them numbers, uh, at least I think you're going to have to resequence.
Well, I, I probably am, but I'm just, for lack of making it tidy.
I didn't mean to jump ahead, but, you know, it was brought up and I remember reading that it didn't appear in the land portion of it and I was thinking it probably should.
Anything else in four that is troublesome to anyone?
And, you know, again, you know, with, with the additional uses, I know from being up the swimming pool, paddle boarding is one of the most popular activities of the swimming pool.
Yeah.
You know, I E is, for example, on that list four, you know, I don't know if I, we want to bother, but it doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, I mean, I.
That seems to be one of the more popular youth activities.
Well, that's because we have paddle boards up there, so. I mean, I think it, I, I, I don't think we have to list them all. I think that's a example area. Okay, five. Ah, oh, the dash, oh, gosh. Uh, new signage for parking area. I don't, I, I don't think we need signage for parking area. I mean.
Yeah. Can we take that designated? Because it says, you know, on item one, allowed only in designated areas.
I don't know.
Does it need to be, because we don't designate it.
Parking doesn't even need mention, because they're not going to park, I mean, where they're going to park, that's not.
We have.
Parking.
Well, I don't want to.
The ordinance is for street parking. They can't park on the street. They have to park, you know, in those.
Well, you don't want them driving through the park, I guess.
I'm wondering if that just gets.
Taken out?
Take it right out.
Okay.
Because, yeah, it's, just comes up with.
If you don't park in the designated areas, you're going to park on the road.
Well.
Well, I mean, it's obvious. There's gravel and there's alongside the, I mean, but let's give people some credit, I guess.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, the next thing is about protecting.
I don't, where was that? I didn't see what he's talking about.
Well, because in section two, it says, cutting, peeling, defacing, or destroying building, sign, structure, bench, or object is prohibited. So their question is, how are we protecting plants, birds, nests, or animals? I, I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
I mean, you could just have, you know, destruction of any property, foliage, anything that belongs to the park is a violation. You cover everything. You don't, I mean, birds and trees.
Well, I mean, I, that, that's in the weeds as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Um. What is?
I don't think it is, but.
You don't think it is?
Well, no, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's. It's detailed. Does it need to be so detailed? No, but there's the person that's going to go up there that wants to fish on the shore that's on the east side of Beaver Pond. There's tree branches in its way. He's going to take a knife out and start cutting the tree branches off so he can make a cast to get his line out there, so.
Well, trees incorporated.
Well, I know, that's what I'm saying.
So it's already covered.
Yeah, it's, it's covered. That's what I'm saying. That, that it's, it's detailed, that list, but there probably are.
There, there's no way we can enforce.
No, but, yeah, no.
Um, well, what do they want? Oh, instead of debris, they'd like the word refuse. I don't care what you call trash. Um, ba, ba, ba. Oh, because I wrote, fires are only allowed in charcoal grills, that somehow that implies that wood fires are allowed in the grill. I mean.
Wow.
Is that, you think that too?
Fires are allowed only in charcoal grills, so does that, that permits people to build a wood fire in a charcoal grill? I would, I would say no.
I mean, I think.
I wouldn't be building a wood fire in a charcoal grill.
Why don't we just say charcoal fires are only allowed in the charcoal grills, period?
Charcoal fires only.
Only charcoal fires are allowed in the grills and no fires on docks.
I wouldn't be, yeah, and don't light the dock on fire.
Charcoal fires are allowed only in the grills. Okay. There you go. And we have the last one, no glass container.
Got to deal with that.
And then.
Oh, yeah.
The rest of this. What was the other thing? Do we have to define traffic? No, it's not defined in any of the, uh, ordinances.
So on the, can I have somebody explain to me this waiver fee for municipal complaints on section one? What the meaning of that?
Article seven.
Article seven, with a waiver fee.
So it's just like, I think it's probably the same as when they, people get, um, a fee, a fine for their dog. They can, um, contest it and ask for a waiver of, the fines for five hundred dollars and they can say, I, I want, I can only pay fifty dollars or something like that. So they can ask to have it waived. I mean, that, I, I don't know in this, but they used to do that all the time with, when we fined for dogs all the time.
An issuing municipal official is authorized to recover a waiver fee.
Yeah.
In lieu of a civil penalty in the following amounts.
When they contest the municipal complaint. So if a ticket's written and they contest it.
Who, and it says they're authorized to recover a waiver fee. Who's going to recover a waiver fee?
Like the traffic and mu, if a, if a ticket is written, it goes to the traffic and municipal.
Something just, it's just sounded twisted to me. I don't, maybe I'm not reading it right.
I mean, I think in our case, Rutland County Sheriff is acting as the municipal official. We haven't designated someone else um, as our municipal, as our issuing municipal official. If there is a ticket to be written, they're writing it on our behalf per the ordinance, right? Just like dog or, you know, on-street parking or something like that.
So instead of sending them to get a civil case, they can do a waiver if they're not going to contest the complaint. So they don't want to go to civil court, but they, they're not going to contest it, so we can basically fine them.
Yeah.
So the waiver fee is a reduced.
Yeah, yeah, it's a fine without going to the court system.
A reduced amount which he can collect, okay. So the other question I had on this, the way it's listed, it says first offense fifty dollars, but there's four chances. My suggestion here is the first offense would actually be number two. The second offense would be the third, and the third offense would be what's listed as the fourth, and that's it. The fifty dollar fine disappears and it starts with one fifty, goes to five hundred, and then results in probation. Because you're just dragging things out.
Right, and I think even after two violations, you shouldn't be allowed there anymore.
Exactly. So you got now, if you eliminate the fourth, let's say the first offense of fifty dollars, eliminate that, start off with the others was two, that's three. It's three strikes, you're done.
Okay.
That would also.
Do on the next page too?
Article eight, on the next page, on the first section.
I'm good with that. Okay.
I don't think people can learn. It's just, you know, how, how many times do you have to?
Yeah, right. Okay. So I can, um, make these changes and then at the next meeting, give you a clean copy, okay? And if something else comes up between now and then, you can let Judy know and, you know, we can make the changes. Um, well, she, she wasn't coming to talk about that?
I guess not.
Um. So in your packet, you have, um, information about SWAC, Solid Waste Alternative Committee. I don't know if you all had an opportunity to read that, but there's been a request by our transport, or our solid waste representative to.
To look at joining this and getting out of the Rutland County Solid Waste District.
And the benefits are?
I honestly don't see any.
Well, I guess.
Credit wise, I don't know.
My question was, how do you, do we, could we still have, uh, curbside pickup? Because it doesn't sound like they have curbside. That's like different places that says in the packet or.
Right, because if you went curbside, our curbside, they pick it up and they bring it to.
Yeah.
Rutland County Solid Waste. These guys have other locations that they bring the garbage to.
So we would have to do that.
So I don't know if Cassella's willing to drive to New York or wherever else these stations are located to.
Yeah, I was wondering how it affects our contract with Cassella's.
Right.
And the cost.
And you also, um, if you were to do this, you would have to, this would have to go to the town for a vote to get out of the Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Yeah.
And then it would have to go on a ballot. Once it's approved, I think there's a one-year waiting period before you actually can re, get released from Rutland County Solid Waste District.
I don't, if, if people are interested in it, I think there needs to be deeper conversation, because I'm not really clear on what, how it works, just from reading this little three page.
Well, there's no expense for Rutland County Solid Waste. I mean, the benefit of it is we can get a permit because we belong.
Right.
Get a permit to the Rutland County Solid Waste, um, dump for fifteen dollars.
Yeah.
If you're not a member, it can be, it'll be sixty dollars and sometimes it's ninety dollars to bring garbage there. Whereas we can buy a permit, you know, online through them, bring your stuff there.
Yeah.
And then our guys also bring stuff there if they have like metal and things like that and they.
Well, I guess my other question would, would be also the way this is set up. Would the expectation be at some point that we opened our?
Car transportation?
Yeah. Because these are so kind of sporadically all over.
Right.
We seem a little more centralized.
Right.
So, and I'm not sure that we want to get into, I mean, I know we have the license or certification or whatever, but that seems like it would be an expenditure for us too, to staff that.
That was a big red flag when I read that paragraph, that last paragraph on the last page. The paid staff is also supported and supplemented by local volunteers.
Yeah.
And I saw that, I said, well, that's not going to happen, so.
You don't want to be on that committee too, huh?
No, that one's not going to happen.
Well, I think the person who is interested in this, if they want to come to the next meeting, speak to us, you know, what the pros and the con, I'm happy to listen to it. I don't want to shut anyone down and I'm open to hearing it, but just from that, that little synopsis, I, I, I'm not sure that it seems advantageous to us and I, and I'm not clear on that if there's a savings or if there's an additional cost and.
Right.
That, to me, that's the bottom line. Well, the cost, I guess, would be.
There's no cost to the Rutland County Solid Waste.
Right, but I'm, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, I'm afraid that it's going to end up, we're going to end up having to join and pay.
Right, yeah. So I'll reach out and just say, the board decided, you know, to not make any movement this time. You're more than welcome to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can invite that, invite.
Yeah, exactly.
To the next meeting. Um, and then Judy has driven around town.
Well, Linda did first and then I did again. And since then, I've probably driven more around town, so.
And so we have a stack of, um, and our.
Letters.
For notice of violation. This letter will serve as your first official notice of violation that on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, an inspection of the above referenced property determined that it is in violation of section four, point B of the Town and Parkers Ground Maintenance and Ordinance where it states, a property owner shall take measures to ensure the grounds of the premise are clean, safe, and sanitary, free from waste, rubbish, debris, standing water, or uncontrolled growth, and shall not pose a threat to the public's health or safety. Grass will not exceed a height of six inches. The owner has thirty days to bring the property into compliance by cutting the grass to meet the aforementioned height requirement. In the event of a failure to achieve the compliance within the time allowed, the select board may take corrective action as it deems appropriate to bring the property into compliance, including employment of the necessary labor materials to achieve compliance. Phew, we use compliance a lot, huh? All costs incurred to perform such work at, as expeditiously as possible will be billed to the property owner and shall be chargeable as a lien against the property. Any further enforcement action shall result, uh, any, to take response to fu, future violations could result in a civil penalty of an initial two hundred and fifty and an additional hundred dollars a day for each day the violation occurs. So there's a stack of them. I don't know if you want to.
If you want to wait till after.
Read through them or look through them, um, and then copy of the ordinance. Do, do you want to look through the names or are you good with?
Do we have a list of names or are these, are these?
One's addressed to each person.
Each one has a different name. So I can send them down and you can look at them and we could take action a little later if you want. Is that okay?
And what I'll do is once they're signed tomorrow, I'll probably go around just to make sure if they weren't wrong, then I won't send that letter. But there's, I mean, this is a start. There's a lot.
And I think these are ones that it's just not like they mo, you know, it's because the weather's been inclement or whatever. It's like, they just haven't.
They don't, yeah.
Yeah. So, all right, while we send those down, a motion would be in order to move into the Board of Water Commissioners.
Motion to move.
Second. Six forty eight. All those in favor?
I'm right.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, you have a list of the delinquent notices and agreements in your packet. Uh, any questions?
So I have a few.
Okay.
If I can.
Yeah, go ahead. I had some questions too, but shoot.
I just want to walk down through and I'll go by number.
Yeah, I think that would, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, uh, the street.
Yeah.
So of course, number one, North Street, it's got, uh, shut off letter, sent letter, but there's nothing for agreement.
There's no, it's, it's a duplex. There's tenants and it's in foreclosure.
Okay. So number three, the Kane Street, and number eleven, the Kane Street have two different names.
Yep, same, well, one's a tenant.
Well, they both say tenant. And there's no agreement.
Because there's a tenant in, in the property.
So they tell us not to make agreements with the tenant.
So these, both names are both tenants? Is that?
No, one's the, the first one's the owner.
First one is the owner.
And the.
I probably shouldn't have put it twice, but I think I caught, caught it and then.
Well, the first one, I think, is, um, might be multi, is that more than one property?
Number three is the duplex in number, um.
Eleven.
Eleven is the tenant in that duplex.
Okay, I'm just saying that with number three, that's a significant amount of money.
Oh, I know, trust me.
And there's nothing, of course, with the first three, I mean, the first one and the third one, uh, I can understand that. Is there, there's nothing? the third one, uh, I can understand that, is there, there's nothing that we can.
Well, the state always says that there's tenants in there, you know, you can't kick them out, they can't, you can't shut him down, you can't tax it, but I think you can. I mean, I think there's ways around it, especially, um, in, there's, I have other issues with that property right now that were just raised to me today.
Right.
So I've gotta do some digging and get in touch with the sheriffs in regards to that property because that's, it's a real, it's a nightmare.
So, but doesn't number three have, um, vacant property on West Street also?
Yes, but he's current on that one, the water shut off.
Oh, okay. But even, even though it's shut off, he's still being billed, right?
Um, I don't think she's billed, I don't think so. And that one's delinquent on taxes, so it's supposed to be up for tax sale.
But even if the water's shut off, why wouldn't they still be being billed? We said before that.
Right, they should be, and I don't, he might be deli, not delinquent on that one.
Okay, I, I think that we need to look into that because that's a bad precedent to be.
Well, that one's gonna be taxed out.
Okay.
All right.
Definitely.
Number four, uh, Cliff Street.
Yeah.
It says no curb stop, needs a curb stop. Can we put in a curb stop and, and take care of business is?
Yeah, they do, they have a list of all the ones that they need to put curb stops in on.
Right, but there's no letter, was there no letter, is there no agreement, is there any notification of any kind?
There was, if there's no curb stop, there wasn't, so.
So nothing.
I mean, I can now just say we're shutting you off.
Well, okay. Uh, number nine, Kane Street. We've got no agreement.
No, there's an agreement.
No, it says agreement letter, agreement no, it says.
Agreement letter, no agreement.
It says no in the next thing, isn't that what it says?
Right, but I think they, I don't know if they did bring one in last week, but they've been paying on it too.
Now, when it says, above says shut off, it has a yes.
Right. Because if they didn't pay this month, then they could be shut off.
Okay, so it's, so they got a five sixteen date. That's the last payment?
Yeah.
That we've seen?
So they should be shut off then?
In June.
Well, that's got the June, okay, and I think it was, uh.
The next one as well.
By the other twenty, and then sixteen for, uh, North Street.
Yeah.
I think it was saying a, an agreement, yes.
Yeah.
And the same thing.
Nothing since four eighteen.
That one, that one is the one on this whole list that's gonna be shut off, that I told them to shut off.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I think they had, uh, well, of course seventeen, Pleasant Street.
That was paid in full Friday.
That's been taken care of.
Last week, yeah. They sold it, they closed.
The closing, oh, is that, is that what you mean by closing?
Yeah, the house was on for sale.
Okay, I, okay. And then, uh, third, or I'm sorry, eighteen, School Street. Agreement, no. And shut off, no.
Paid April and June, but nothing in May.
So is the June tenth?
Yep, and I think she could have dropped her agreement off last week too.
Okay.
Probably wasn't updated before you got your package.
Well, that's okay, I just got a couple. And then you got John Carroll, oh, I'm sorry, nineteen, West Street.
Yeah, they got an agreement.
Yeah, that was good, that was yes. Uh, twenty-five. To go down through, uh, say twenty-six, even the ones to drop down below.
No agreement.
Yeah, it's got shut off listed on every single one of them.
Yep, because we don't have any agreement and they haven't paid anything or reached out to me.
And then some of them had the June twenty-ninth.
Shut off.
Yeah.
Yeah, the June twenty-ninth, but they had, uh, I think it's number thirty and thirty-one. They do have a curb stop. There's no agreement in place. There was a payment on six thirteen and six ten, which were, they're saying no, shut off because of those payments.
Yeah, and because they have agreements pending, they contacted us and said that they'll send the agreements in, or I have the agreements, but they haven't come and signed it. So if I send a letter out saying, you know, you're delinquent, we are gonna shut your water off if you don't contact me by such and such a date, and they call me and they say, I'll pay, or they pay. And then they don't sign an agreement, and then the next month they don't pay, I have to send a whole nother different letter saying, we're shutting you off. Cause otherwise, like a lot of them would call me and say, we saw you guys out here, they look like they're gonna shut the water off, and we were told, we'll pay. So they come down and pay, and I send them an agreement, but they don't send it back. So by rights, they broke, you can't say they broke the agreement because they haven't signed an agreement, so then you have to send that second letter out saying, here's an agreement, and you have to abide by this agreement. And then if they don't pay off of that agreement, then you can shut it off because they broke the agreement.
Well, when they come in to pay initial goodwill, good gesture payment, they can't do an, an agreement?
Well, if I'm not here, a lot of them just come in and pay downstairs and they don't touch, they don't let me know until after the fact, so they don't do an agreement.
Well.
Or if they should be directed to just see you specifically.
Well, yeah, they should, and, and most of the time they will, it's just if I'm not here.
Because some of these, the amounts they're paying are so insignificant based on their balance, I mean, the goal was supposed to be in a year.
Right, and most amounts were paid, the amount they paid were gonna get them through for twelve months to pay it off.
Okay, so.
I sent that amount in a letter.
Sure.
I'm all set with that, thank you for clarifying some of that, but it's still, it's significant. I mean, it's significant money and it's, it's.
Yeah, it is.
And I'm just wondering.
And, and they're gonna get bills again here next month.
And it's hard, because you know, you, I send an agreement, they'll call and say, oh, I'm sending in three hundred dollars, and I'll say, okay, I'm sending the agreement, I'm putting that in, this is what you owe, this is what you pay your member. And then I never send the agreement. So then I got, or they never send it back, so then I gotta call them, send them another letter, and say, and it just keeps, you know, that's why it's easier to just say, here's, here's the shut off, you know, if you want to pay, you come and pay, and then you sign an agreement right then.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it would be easier because it could get confusing and you're chasing, you're just chasing around.
Oh, yeah, and you gotta keep looking at this every month and go, okay, who hasn't been, you know.
It's easy to lose track of what's.
Yeah, definitely.
But I do think it's important, like, maybe the first priority should be, if they're on this list and they need a curb stop, then that needs to be what the water guys are doing. Um, because that number is a big number for that person, number four. Um, and so, I mean, that's just, I mean, you're number four on the list, so.
Well, it's like by the time I send the first letter out and then they decided to do an agreement, by that time, the amount is different.
Yeah.
So I gotta figure out what the new.
Well, but just in general, I just think, if that needs a curb stop, then I think that needs to be top of the list here about getting the curb stop.
It's not just easy to do a curb stop either sometime, you know, like there's no, you know, the, the curb stop's like right up next to the house or something, or they, we've got to put a whole line in to get to the, get a curb stop in there, so it's not just like, oh, let's just plug curb stop in here.
No, 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 I know.
That, it's, it's, it's more than that for them sometime.
Right, we need to, you trace the line in, yeah, but I mean, still, these people have been on this list prior to you sitting in that chair. And the curb stop still hasn't been installed, so I'm just saying, we need to figure out what that is and get that done, because they're kind of just getting a pass because they don't have a curb stop. So, and that's wrong. Along with these other ones that, you know. So, okay.
Maybe, maybe for curb stop, well, hopefully they can find those, get them taken care of.
And we did clarify, because a lot of the curb stops aren't like at the roadside, you know, by the main, then the curb stops aren't there. The curb stop's up on their property in there. And I said, we have every right to go in there and shut the water off, even if we can't get to the curb stop at the, at the main.
Yeah.
I said, it's, it's on most, a lot of deeds and stuff that we have the right to maintain our waterways.
Yeah.
And our sewers and stuff, so we have the right to go and, and shut it.
I mean, it, it just seems like on the list, the problem is they can't find it, or I guess it does say, yes, one.
Right.
Not in the right way, but yeah.
And there could be a curb stop there, they just can't find it.
And some places, I mean, you have more than one curb stop too, because they've moved them, so.
Or ten people on the same curb stop.
Okay, uh, A and E started doing GPS surveys for the water line for the.
Inventory.
Inventory.
Yeah, and they're coming back tomorrow to finish up.
Okay, and they're doing that here?
Um, well, they're going around to the houses with the guys.
Okay. All right, and water rates?
Yep. So I, I went back and forth with, um, Lexilia and Mary and Stan and everything, and it's, it's so convoluted the way they came up with rates, and everything has changed because the list they use, the spreadsheet, those businesses don't even longer exist, and they'd extract those businesses from the total amount. So when I met Lexilia, what we talked about is we don't, we don't want to see the water or sewer rates go up at all this year. They went up last year with no explanation. We can't afford, I don't think, to raise them again this year, especially knowing what's happening down at the wastewater facility with the hagoons and what that's gonna do to the town. So I'd like to keep them at the minimum and.
Or keep them flat, not.
Well, at, yeah, where they're at now, and figure out the business piece of it.
And so their, one is what, five twenty?
Five twenty-eight, I think it is, and five fifty.
Well, that's a good point you make with the.
Five forty-five.
Sewer plan.
Yeah.
So we want to keep them at the current rates.
Right.
Discussion about that for water, we're just in water right now.
How does our budget look in the current year? Are we gonna end with, uh, black and red?
Our water and sewer budgets are good.
Are good?
Yeah, I mean, they both got good reserves in them, you know?
And we're supposed to, are we harvesting in Chittenden then, or what's happened?
Not Chittenden this year, no.
Okay.
We are over here, though.
Yeah, but the Chittenden goes into the water, is, yeah, so. Uh, motion would be in order to keep the FY twenty-five water rates at the current rate.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Will that have any known impact on the twenty-six fiscal year budget? Are we gonna be looking to cover a deficit that we create by doing this, or the, the deficit, there really won't, there'll be, uh, not enough to support the entire budget? Where might that money come from, if that's the case?
I don't think they'd be, there'd be a deficit in the next budget, fiscal year budget.
Okay.
Um, plus that budget hasn't been created, so you can always create a budget that's gonna support the changes. I mean, like I said, we do have reserves to use if, if need be, in both water and sewer.
Because we've already approved the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. You know, we know now how many units we're gonna be billing at this rate. Does it come up with our budget for fiscal year twenty-five, or is there gonna be a big shortfall?
I can't tell you that right now. I mean, I, I think what we budgeted, there shouldn't be a shortfall based on these, these figures staying.
Well, we budgeted what the needs were. Now we're looking at, well, what do we have to apply per user to come up with that money?
Right.
Now, we're saying we're gonna keep it flat, which I'm in favor of keeping it flat, but I just want to make sure that we don't create a deficit, because to start the year knowing we're gonna be billing eight hundred units at five hundred and thirty dollars, you know, does that come up with the money we need?
Well, I think one thing too, you guys, the board has to revisit, how are you gonna do with businesses? Are you gonna?
Yes, definitely. Before the next budget season.
Yeah.
The sooner the better with that one.
But I can try to do a calculation based on where, what we budgeted and what this looks like and do a comparison. Do you want to see that?
Well, we really.
Well, we need to move, I think.
Need to decide, because they're gonna want to send stuff out before, before our next meeting.
Yeah. If you can obtain that information, you know, it would be nice to have, just to look at.
I'll do sewer and water.
Okay, good.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. Anything else for the Board of Water Commissioners?
And I was just gonna say, Judy, if we see that it is gonna create a big deficit, you know, when we get those numbers, we can always try and put some controls on their spending, you know, so.
Right, yeah.
It does give us some options.
Yeah.
If the numbers show that. I don't want the people thinking we're reckless and saying, we're gonna freeze it, but we've already got the budget and we're gonna automatically go into a deficit. No, that's not the case.
Well, it's not like when the budget is created either, that you set the, I mean, you didn't set, you don't set the rate when you create the budget, so it's one of those kind of like, what came first, the chicken or the egg kind of thing.
But we have a budget, and now.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got to do the billing to get the funds to support that budget, so.
All right. A motion would be in order to move out of the Board of Water Commissioners and move into the Board of Sewer Commissioners.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And so the motion would be to keep the FY twenty-five sewer rate at the FY twenty-four rate. I'm thinking the same discussion applies to this.
Yes.
All right. Anybody like to make the motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh-huh, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, take a motion at seven oh seven to exit the Board of Water Commissioners and, or Sewer Commissioners and enter the regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you have the sheriff's report. I know you just got it tonight, but any questions, you can always reach out to Judy, and then we'll move on to Judy for the manager's report.
Hey. Let's see, um, so sidewalk on South Street is gonna probably start Wednesday. Um, we just got final approval today from the state, um, saying everything's in order, and, um, they're gonna be putting signs up and they probably won't start tearing up, digging till Monday, so.
Channel three or channel five news today.
Did it?
Yeah.
Why?
I think it was channel five news, they said, uh, construction and.
Well, because of the roads maybe, the roadway?
Proctor, the sidewalk, and they were very good about it, it was, it wasn't like, please avoid proctor.
Right.
Yeah, it was.
I think it was channel three or channel five.
You finally made the news for someone.
On the news.
Okay. Um, I responded back to Senator Welch and Senator Sanders about the congressional funds.
Yeah.
Um, and Welch's office reached out to me last week, emailed me, called me, and I was.
Send a check?
So she was tied up pretty much today, I was gonna, supposed to reach out to her, and then we had the exhibit thing, so.
Yeah.
Um, she's traveling tomorrow with the senator, so I'm gonna reach out to her, but she said, we definitely want to talk to you, so, so that's a good thing, so.
And they found some money in the closet.
At least they, they're willing to listen, you know, so that's a, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's great.
Um, let's see, uh, first concert summer is this Wednesday, hopefully it won't rain. If it does, then it's gonna be, um, the rain date is the seventeenth, but we do have a concert on the tenth also, so. But hope for nice weather on Wednesday. Um, haven't heard anything on mosquito spraying. Um, haven't heard anything on mosquito spraying. Um, again, don't get much response. I read your minutes. They seem to talk a lot about finances and how they, what they need to buy and do things, but I never hear anything about spraying. My biggest concern is the money we put into this for joining now, now that they're more a member. Um, I feel like we get less attention. Um, we haven't sprayed once.
No.
This year.
They're pretty bad.
The, the traps are, haven't come up with the amount of mosquitoes in the traps.
Holy crud, where are they putting them? Put them up at the pool. The mosquitoes are awful. They're awful at our house.
Well, the last email I got was, they said that they were waiting for a, um, uh, what was it? Did he say it was some kind of, um, connection piece, something for the spraying truck, I think?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah.
So they can download the stuff and send the reports to the state.
Oh, okay, I thought it was had to do with operating the sprayer.
Well, it does, it does. It records it. It records all the information.
How much they spray.
And then it has to be downloaded and stored and available when, if the state so desires that.
My question to him was, if this is such a crucial piece, why did you wait till now to order it, when you start usually spraying in May?
It was supposed to be in the agreement, and, uh, the chairman was, he's also involved with the Lake Association, and they were going to have some representatives from, uh, some of the companies that are selling the equipment and the drones and, and what have you. So they were going to contact them, I think it was the next week after the meeting, and, uh.
Have they sprayed anywhere yet?
No.
No.
Really?
They've done the adalto side, and again, for the adalto side, that's to treat the larvae, you know, in the water. But they do have to test, meet a certain threshold before they can add the adalto side chemicals.
So what's the end result for us if we're paying these thousands of dollars into this and they don't spray at all? Does that money get banked for the next year?
No. Well, some of it probably will, but no, I would say there are expenses, you know, from automobile insurances to liability insurances. There are, you know, fixed costs that have to be paid, but they will be spraying in, in, uh.
I just hate to have concerts come up and all of a sudden it's sunny and warm, and then there's mosquitoes everywhere, and black flies.
But you can't do it unless
The results show that there's a need.
Show that.
And where do they put them? Because those are the two places.
Down on Patch Street.
The well.
This one, yes, yeah. And then I don't remember where the second was.
No, I can, I can call and find out.
But if you want us to make a recommendation where they might want to try one, we can contact them. And it was brought up at the last meeting that, you know, you brought up that, you had two correspondences that weren't responded to. The operations supervisor said that, he got the phone message, and he responded in the form of a email, and I think it had to do with the pool, testing up the pool, and that's where they tested and found nine mosquitoes. And the threshold is forty in a twenty-four hour period, that's why they didn't. But when I mentioned to, you know, the chair, he said that, uh, he did not respond, so. You know, if they don't, by all means.
Right.
Yeah.
Let us know right off, Judy, and then we can call them, not that.
I do feel there's fewer mosquitoes this year than there.
I, I think it, it depends on where you were, and like, you know.
Like, be your pond, they should test.
But, yeah. Last year, we got sprayed more than a lot of the other towns, because we had the Monday. And the, the count was good, the weather was good. Some of those other place, towns in the district didn't get sprayed. So last year, we got way more spraying than most of the other towns in the district. And.
Nice not to have mosquitoes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and not have to pay.
Um, let's see, uh, I mentioned the sheriff's contract already. Oh, I received a thank you card from the Proctor Elementary School for colorful steps for their playground, to all the board and everything, so, um, it's on my desk, I can bring it up, pass it along to you guys. Um, let's see, touched on that, that. Skating rink hours, they're talking about the camp being open now, and she's gonna try to be open on, um, weekends, I think it was, I can't remember the exact hour she was thinking about, but for roller skating, so that it will be operable. Or even evening sometimes, after day camp's out. And she said if day camp's opening, and they're having roller skating, that other people can come and roller skate too, so. But I'll try to nail down those exact dates and times. I have reached out to other people for volunteering, or if they wanted to go up there and we pay them to open up the rink, so we can do roller skating. So, um, if you know of anybody, let me know, because I'd like to see it open this summer. Uh, let's see, took photos at, um, twenty-six fifty-one West Street and sent it to the state. Also, I reached out to Alderson for an estimate of asbestos removal. And I sent a letter to Melanie Mace to address to her aunt, who she is supposed, the letter required a signature on it from her. Have not received that back yet. Um, the state said, there's nothing they can do about it, it's in our hands. And, um, the total asbestos abatement was about forty-nine hundred dollars. So, I guess next steps, there's like a permit, third-party post-abatement clearance. Add an alternate removal of above-ground storage tank. Didn't total everything, but. But if you total all that stuff there, it's about closer to seven thousand dollars. I did explain to them that if we were to do this, that it would be a lien on their taxes, and that they would be liable to pay us back, if not, we could tax sale the property down the road, potentially, and get the money.
So I think we, we have to make some decision about what's gonna go on. I, I mean, this is just drug on for far too long.
I mean, it's a lot of money. It's not money budgeted for something like this.
No.
With the abatement, you know, it's just in the glazing. Are they gonna try and remove the glazing onsite? Or are they just gonna take out the window, take the windows out of here, and, okay? Because when I read that, I was trying to think whether they were gonna try and do the abatement onsite, okay.
And actually, just, the sad part is, it's a lot of money, and it's just a few windows.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and the tank, yeah.
The oil tank was like, what, fifteen hundred dollars, or twenty-five, something like that? Yeah, so, once that's all done, they can just go in there and clean it all up. They don't have to worry about. You know, they could get a back hole in there and scoop it up, truck it away, but I don't even know if they're gonna do that.
Yeah, they couldn't bury it onsite if you're gonna.
No.
Drill a well or whatever. Um, and there's, I don't understand, there's drums with the steel drums, the liquid, the fuel, those are like on the property someplace, in the fire?
Yeah, there's a wood fire, an oil drum in the basement.
Yep, but these are fifty-five gallon steel drums.
Yeah, and then number two fuel liquid or solids per fifty-five. I mean, those are there, or those are, these are just costs if they run into them? I guess I don't. Because we've never talked about those things before.
No, he didn't mention them. He mentioned just the oil tank and the, um, windows.
Probably it's hard for them to guesstimate how much is.
Right.
Actually in there.
Yeah, but they're not going through the, I mean, it's like, if it's in the basement, they're gonna have a back hole and go to the basement, I mean.
Yeah, they, I mean, I, they'd have the equipment to go in there, they'd have to remove the tank you can get to, because it's all open there.
So can we just get clarification on those, and then can we put it on the agenda next meeting? Yeah, to take action on? And then I would ask him too, um, what kind of timeframe we're looking at. I mean, is he looking to do it like if we approve it in a week to ten days, or are we looking like at September or something like that?
Okay. And just a reminder that the next meeting is when they're doing bid openings for paving, so.
Yeah.
Just as a, okay. Um. Let's see. If you noticed, the tree was removed at sixty-one Main Street. I sent photos of the ledge and the abatement that is not mowed to the owners of sixty-one Main Street, and told them that it's a responsibility. The tree, um, they did hire the ones who do their mowing to take the tree away. I talked with them, because they were up there actually when, when I went up to take pictures, and they were gonna reach out to their boss too, to share about the ledge, to see if there's anything he knew about fixing it, where the rocks are coming down, so. Um, reached out to, um, the owner, and he, they haven't responded yet, so. But at least a mowing of the lawns still, up at the building.
Okay.
So I think that's it for now, unless I.
One question, Judy. This notice of, uh, lawns.
Yep.
Do you want us to start signing them, or?
Sure, yeah, because you all have to sign it.
Let them start on the second.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for Judy?
Yeah, pursuing those, uh, grants for the sewer plant, that's, yeah, keep right after those. Senators.
Yeah, you know, oh, I can't wait to talk to them, don't we?
All right, old business, uh, short-term rental agreement. Um, I, I, I'm thinking maybe like the best course of action right now is for us just to, um, let that lie and see how the state is going to capture that as they start to, um, require signups and things like that. They're going to require, um, a fee also when you sign up, and see how well they do at capturing them. I also think it seems like in town that, um, there were a few places that are, I, I don't know for what reason, but it doesn't appear that they are short-term rentals anymore, that they have moved towards, um, long-term, uh, rental. So, I don't know what the board thinks, or, the other thing is, we don't really have, to have someone to be in charge of this. I, I mean, I don't know who that's gonna be, Judy, while she's driving around looking at the graphs? Um, or, um, so, so that, that's a concerning piece, that you don't have someone, and I don't know, I think, I just think we can wait and see how well the state does with capturing it.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
I agree with you. I mean, because if we start coming up with suggestions and stuff, it might be entirely different than what the state's. It might overlap, or it might conflict.
Sure.
So is that what you're here for?
No.
I didn't know if you. Oh, we did that. Yes, sorry, you're at the con. They just made some edits, she was gonna do some edits, and then I'll send it back out.
Okay.
Because we, they had your, um, comments and stuff.
I'll take it.
Yeah, so we incorporated those and made some changes.
Yeah.
Get this, throw it away.
My opinion is, well, can we up here, we've filled a lot, or, they'll find out, and if not, we'll try again tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
Lisa, did you wanna talk to Dale while he's here about the purchasing and purchasing?
Oh, yeah, for the, um, the planks. The, do you want me to order those?
Tom will call tomorrow, and he'll ask if they can, um, bill the town for them.
Yeah.
And if not, we'll just pay for it and then give the purse.
Okay, because what we'd like to do is just, if he can't order them, they can't do it, then I can call or those. And you can get a check to mail it to them. That way, it's a cleaner, and you guys don't have to worry about it.
If we can accelerate things, I mean, I don't know, a little days over going through you, but I mean, if it's cleaner and doesn't have a consequence either.
Right, okay.
I'll tell Tom, it's not.
Okay.
Who are you getting it through?
Dot doctors.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, the same place.
Yeah, we'll get the paperwork, we know what we bought on those.
Seems like they would bill us.
Just let, just tell Tom to be joking, he needs anything.
And will we insure it now that we, after we?
We'll put it on the property schedule, yeah.
I'd like to win both the good stuff that I think has been missing, because your idea was a lovely idea. So, for good stuff, I'd like to say that the flower garden on South Street is coming along.
Yeah, that was, that was, I went down and to check on something else, and I was like, whoa, where did that go in?
Who did that?
Kyle.
Did he really? Wow, it looks great.
He said he's gonna grade it more, though. He said, he did it with those, because he said, it's just so easy to mow that square and go. And so he's gonna go down, and he's gotta still level it out and seed it and stuff around it. But then I said I was gonna reach out to you and, um, the coal company, or, or fuel company, to coordinate plantings and what. Yeah, because I think they salvaged all the bulbs.
Yes, I have a connection to buy some more, if you'd be, and we'll make that happen.
Okay.
I mean, I love the material, and if anything, it could be bigger, and if I didn't, I'd vote, like, I like the.
Yeah.
Have some.
Yeah, I was, he was very proactive, I guess. I was like, whoa, where did this go in?
It's better than the work that he gave me.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else for older new business? All right, um, motion would be in order at seven twenty-six to move into executive session for personnel.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.